Okay, so whoop, got it. I don't know if people have had a chance to review the minutes. It's so long ago that.
I know, it's very long ago.
Anyway, well, I'll assume that the folks have reviewed the minutes and I move to accept them as written.
Second.
Okay, the minutes are accepted.
No, you have to vote, you have to vote.
Vote, oh, I.
Right.
I. Talk about rest. Okay. Um, I don't, you know, on the agenda that I also, long ago, we were talking about the, the short term rentals. I don't know that at this juncture, I mean, there are a number of other, I think what Mike is going to talk about. Probably has some relationship to the short-term rental issue. As, as, you know, does the comprehensive plan. Did anybody have any, you know, any thoughts that they wanted to add about short-term rentals at this point, or do you want to just move on to Mike's discussion?
Well, I would suggest that we listen to what Mike says and then come back to it one way or another. We have, we have to do something decisively and there's three options for us as I see it. And I'm interested in hearing, you know, Mike's take on it, but one is to go forward in a positive way, one is to not go forward and, and no, there's two ways for us to go forward in terms of making some kind of recommendation. We can recommend to do something or recommend not to do something specifically for some kind of a provision that creates action. The third thing to do is, but doing it decisively and with good reason and rationale is to do nothing and just to say, we are very aware of it and aware that there's a lot of people with differing opinions and communities all over the place that are taking different approaches. And we're looking at all those, but for right now, we do not have a recommendation one way or another. Now, I'd like to hear what Mike says.
Okay.
Um, before, Tom, do you want to add another item to?
Oh, you want, well, I was gonna leave that at the end, but in any event, we're doing some work on our property which becomes complicated because we're actually in the commercial fisheries and marine zone. And we're doing some driveway work and because it requires planning board approval and I cannot, obviously I have to recuse myself.
If you could just add it to the agenda, I have a couple items to add about it. So we could, I could do that discussion for you.
Okay, so well, well, you said we should add it to the agenda for the next meeting, is that correct?
Right, but we should talk about it tonight so that people are prepared for the next meeting.
Okay. Three fifty, it's sorry, sir.
It's not, no, it's not.
Okay, so.
No, no, it's in the post robinette.
So just to talk about, so there's a piece of legislation that was signed by the governor that goes into effect, most of it goes into effect next week, July first. Or, yeah, next week. It's called LD 2003. It was signed by the governor on, in April of 2022. And it's called an Act to Implement Recommendations of the Commission to Increase Housing Opportunities in Maine by Setting Zoning and Land Use Restriction. So there was a commission that was put together and their object was to look to see how they could increase housing and they came with some recommendations and this piece of legislation came out of that. There's been a lot of you know, objection to it, but all of the proposed changes and diminishes to it have lost in the legislature. So at this point, it looks like it's going to go into effect July 1st without change. There's four main areas that are addressed by LD 2003. The first one is extra dwelling units allowance. The second one is accessory dwelling units allowance. The third one is affordable housing density bonus. And then the fourth one is what is the municipal role in fair housing and statewide production goals? I'm not going to talk about number four because that's not implemented yet. So the other three are what's going to go into effect July 1st. So the first one, extra dwelling units, basically says where any area where housing is allowed in the municipality has to allow a certain density of dwelling units on a giving lot. Okay, and so basically what this does is this increases regardless of what the town already has in its land use ordinance, it increases the density. How that affects Sorrento, there's a couple other parts to this is LD 2003 respects certain certain regulations that are already in place. So one of those is the subsurface wastewater rule, the minimum lot size rule, and the, and the third one is the shoreland zoning. So this will not necessarily affect shoreland zoning. In other words, if shoreland zoning says you need an acre to put a dwelling unit on it, this cannot trump that. However, if, if you, so for instance, if you had a minimum lot size of an acre for a dwelling unit in a non-shoreland area, this would say you can, you can increase that density. The state rules on subsurface wastewater and minimum lot size still apply. And so the minimum lot size is half an acre, which is, happens to be the same as the town of Sorrento. In the building and land use ordinance, it specifies lot size is a minimum of 20,000 square feet, which is roughly a half acre, it's actually a little bit less. So it, it doesn't necessarily conflict with what, what the, the ordinance is in Sorrento. And the minimum lot size in most cases, without a variance for a septic system is 20,000 square feet as well. So that doesn't necessarily cause a problem compared to the ordinance that's already in place with Sorrento. So if we go to the next one, accessory dwelling units. Says in any area where housing is allowed, a municipality must allow an accessory dwelling unit to be located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling unit. Now, that could conflict with the Sorrento ordinance. So the state ordinance says minimum lot size of 20,000. The state septic rules say minimum lot size for a septic is 20,000. Our, in Sorrento rule says you can only put one dwelling on 20,000 square feet. However, this allows accessory dwelling unit, so you could theoretically, if you're, if you could design a septic that can fit on that lot and can support two dwelling units, you could theoretically put two dwelling units on 20,000 square feet. And so the problem for me as a code enforcement officer is I have to enforce the rules that are in place for the town of Sorrento. When this law goes into effect, somebody could come to me and say, well, I've got a half acre lot. I can make my septic work for that and I want to put two dwelling units on it. I would have to deny that application because the Sullivan ordinance says you can only have one dwelling unit on that half acre lot. And therefore, most likely that person would appeal that if they understand what this new rule says and we would go to court and we would lose. So it behooves us in Sorrento to incorporate LD 2003 in our land use ordinance. Because we're, we're fighting a fight that we can't win. So we have to be, we have to figure out a way to be consistent with what the state says. So very, fairly unique situation in that with Maine being a home rule state, in other words, in, in most cases, the state of Maine doesn't override a municipality's ability to create its own land use ordinance, you're in charge, so to speak. This is a unique situation where the state says, I don't care what your, what you say in your town and what your land use ordinance is. This is what you have to do. And that's why there's been quite a bit of objection to it. The, the third piece is the affordable housing density. And basically what that says in any area where multifamily dwellings are allowed, which is pretty much everywhere in this, in the area of Sorrento, the only thing that might trump that is the shoreland zoning. A municipality must allow an affordable housing development to have a dwelling unit density of at least two and a half times the base density that is otherwise allowed in that location. The affordable housing development must be a designated growth area, must be served by public water and public sewer. So since we don't have public sewer, we, we wouldn't necessarily have to worry so much about this particular part of it changing what our land use ordinance already says. So you can't, you can't necessarily get a affordable housing development increase of two and a half times because we don't have public sewer. So really, the only one that, of the, of the four of them that are here and the three of them that are actually decided as far as an effective date, the only one that can challenge our particular land use ordinance is accessory dwelling unit allowance. Does anybody have questions on that? I know threw a lot of information at you.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought we did have public municipal sewer in a small part of downtown.
It's not really a sewer, it's a septic system.
What's the difference?
The way it's treated. I don't, I don't think you could, you could consider that downtown area, I don't think you can consider that a sewer, I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, I, I think that actually is considered sewer, but it's it's very minimal and it's, most of the homes that are on that sewer system don't use it.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look into, I believe the sewer system is different than what we have. We don't, we don't actually treat the effluent.
That's right.
My understanding is that it's, it's basically a disposal field that's used by multiple properly.
That's right, yep.
Yeah, so I don't believe it would be considered sewer, but I'd have to look into it more. Nevertheless, I, I quite honestly, I don't think that anybody's going to come in and try to do an affordable housing density increase in Sorrento.
Hey, Mike?
Yes, Rob?
So the law doesn't say anything about prohibiting people from using new excessive accessory dwellings for short-term rentals?
The law does not say anything about short-term rentals.
That's stupid.
It does, it actually enables, there is a section that enables municipalities to regulate short-term rentals.
Yeah, that's a separate, that's a separate piece, but it's not, you know, again, you could look at that and say, well, that means everybody could, well, so first thing, the minimum lot size in Sorrento is half an acre. So there's not too many people that couldn't put another dwelling unit, should they want, on their property to rent out on a short-term basis.
Right.
The only ones that this is really going to benefit is somebody that has a half acre and make their subsurface wastewater system work and add an additional dwelling unit. So there's a challenge to that based on the soils, but not inconceivable to, in order to do that. But there isn't, there isn't currently a regulation that says that they can't do it for a short-term rental. So really what this all says to me, you know, as your code enforcement officer is, we need to determine what the town wants to allow people to do. We need to be consistent with what this rule says and therefore we have to put language in front of the voters to pass to amend your land use ordinance so that we don't end up going to court for something that we know we can't win.
It, it's one thing that's a peculiarity of this, they refer to accessory dwelling units, which implies that it's in somehow, some way distinct from the primary dwelling unit, yet there are no restrictions placed other than you can limit it to being no bigger, I guess, than the existing dwelling unit.
Right, and that's, that's a challenge for Sorrento because we don't have any lot coverage requirements in our zoning ordinance. So we'd have to look and see, you know, if that's something you want to consider. You know, if you figure a half acre lot, it's one thing to be in Portland and cover 90% of that lot. So the other thing I will say is setbacks still have to be respected. But we have fairly minimal setbacks in Sorrento. So it's one thing to have a high density in Portland that's on sewer and public water and then another thing to have a high density, but even 20,000 square feet, you're not going to cover a lot of that lot, even with the driveway and two structures, particularly if one structure is slightly smaller than the other.
Right, and you still have to provide subsurface
Right. Yeah, so you, yes, you still have to have a, a septic system that can support that, but you know, if you, so you're talking about at a minimum, you're having a septic system that supports 360 gallons a day. So the minimum for a dwelling in general is 180 gallons. And so that's, whether you have two bedrooms or not, that's, this is what Hillary just ran into. That, that's, that's the minimum. So a dwelling unit is required to have 180 gallons. If it's an attached unit, you could possibly have a dwelling unit with 180 and what's considered, no offense to anybody, a mother-in-law apartment. As long as it's attached, it's a one-bedroom apartment with a kitchen, that'd be 120 gallons, so you can get down to 300 gallons on that. Which is not a huge septic system, but again, really depends on, you know, all that depends on the soil quality on the lot.
Right.
So, you know, of concern is that we could have someone try to take advantage of this law, which is perfectly their right, which would put them in conflict with our zoning ordinance and therefore, you know, lead the town into litigation that it's going to lose.
Right, so there's no requirement that we enforce the zoning ordinance when it's in conflict with the state or?
No, we have to enforce our zoning ordinance. We can't, we can't, unless we, so based on the, the information I've got from the MMA, the Maine Municipal Association is, we have to enforce our zoning ordinance and if the towns, I mean, if the state's law trumps that, if we haven't specifically adopted that, we would, we would have a conflict. I'm not sure how I can go ahead and approve a project when our land use ordinance says one thing, even though state law says something different.
So, so Mike, this is all new to me, so I'm learning a lot, but, so what you're recommending is that we redo our ordinance that meets these new requirements of LD 223.
Yeah, so at the very least, where it comes to accessory dwelling units, we should respect the language in there and adopt that for our land use ordinance at the current time. You know, there's, there continues to be objections to this particular piece of legislation, but nothing's been able to pass through the legislature with enough support for it to change. They even tried to just extend the timeframe of when this would be implemented. This is more challenging for small, small communities because most small communities don't have anybody that could help implement this. You know, for the planning board or even with the planning board with my assistance, this is not my area of expertise, you know, creating land use ordinance. So I'm learning along with you. So, you know, and I've, and I've, and I've contacted the attorney for the town to see what we should do.
Okay, that was my question is like, what do we do next?
Yeah, so when, when I was, the last workshop I went to about this particular thing, they had two attorneys there from Drummond and Woodsum, which is a fairly prestigious land use attorney in the state of Maine and the Maine Municipal Association had supported the presentation, so I'm fairly confident that what they told us was accurate.
Okay, I have a question. So it sounds like it's a, it's pretty much of a no-brainer that the town has to do what you said. How, how does that have to, maybe Rob knows the answer to this, does, I don't think that can be a select persons, just groups decision.
No, that has to go in front of the voters, Bob.
Okay, so what happens in the meantime, or does it have to be a special election?
So you, for, for you, so this has to be, has to be put on a warrant for a town meeting and the town has to vote to adopt the zoning change and Rob, please correct me if I'm incorrect, my, my understanding is that's the way it works. So there has to be proper notice. I believe that's at least 90 days. So at the very earliest, the town wouldn't be able to adopt this until the fall.
I'm not aware of 90 days, but we would have to have a hearing and then, then it could be on the annual warrant.
Yeah, I'm, I, I don't believe, well, we could check into it.
Right.
Okay, that, yeah, Mike, if you could check into that, it's important because the, the worst thing that could happen is, is that for some reason we have to, this is a bizarre situation, because if we have to wait until the fall and then you're putting in a situation, we could, we could actually be forced into a lawsuit that, that we don't, that we are basically saying ahead of time, we don't want to do, we're going to recommend that we not do it, but if we can't change, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I totally understand and that's my concern as well. You know, I would hope that if there were someone that was making this application, that they would be willing to wait, knowing that they're going to prevail, that they would be willing to wait until the town can adopt it, knowing that the town is moving in that direction.
Right.
I would, I would, I would hope that there's not a property owner in the town of Sorrento that is desirous of taking the town to court because they know they're going to.
So I presume, who, who drafts this ordinance? Is that, I mean, it sounds, I would say slightly technical thing, is that our town attorney?
Or, I think that we may be able to get some samples from MMA or other towns of similar size that have done this. I know we're going to have to do it in Sullivan as well. Although Sullivan's land use ordinances are a little bit different than Sorrento's. The, the challenge is, I, I really hate to go ahead and adopt one change to the land use ordinance, because I think that we all agree, there's probably other changes that need to be made to our land use ordinance. But this is a fairly pressing issue to, that we have to do.
Right.
So, Mike, we're not rewriting the ordinance, aren't we just amending it?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, there's no difference to, we're not, yes, we're not changing the whole thing, but even to amend the land use ordinance still has to go into, in front of the voters of the town.
Right, right, but we, there's some other amendments we need to make anyway, so can't we do them all at once?
If, if we could get it all together in the same amount of time, sure. But you also have to understand that in most cases, changes to your land use ordinance have to follow what your comp plan says. And so I think we've kind of discussed previously that we may want to wait until the comp plan is at least drafted before we start talking about changes to the land use ordinance. If we make, so this, I think, you know, as Bob used the expression, this is a no-brainer. But I think if we make, try to make other changes to the land use ordinance and they're not necessarily supportive of what the comp, the new comp plan says, they could be challenged. So I think we're better off waiting on those until the comp plan is, at least in draft form.
So we, we go ahead with this particular ordinance and then it will be incorporated into the more comprehensive ordinances that will come about because of the comp plan.
Yeah, I think that you, you know, this could be, I, again, I'd have to consult the MMA, I think it, we could simply put something in the land use ordinance that says that the town respects the requirements of LD 2003 as they apply or something like that. Rather than try to change all the sections of the current land use ordinance.
Right. Right, and, and is that, well, I mean, you, I don't know exactly what you said to Dan Pleggy, but.
Well, at this point, I just left a message because we didn't actually get a chance to talk about it.
Right, right. So now, does the, is the procedure, is the, does the planning board direct the select board on this, or, I mean, the warrants and all?
I think it would make no sense for an amendment to the, to the land use ordinance to be supported by the planning board and send that to the select board to put on the warrant. You know, you guys are really the experts when it comes to land use for your town, whether you want to feel that way or not, but that would probably be the most, most appropriate way. It really does, while the select board, you know, may have, may have an understanding of this issue, you know, if you look at delegation of responsibilities, this is, you know, they've created you to do this job.
And essentially we have no choice, this state has essentially given us.
At the present time, that would appear to be so. Trina, do you have any other questions on it?
You doing, I'm muting, um, no, but thank you very much, Mike.
So I, you know, I don't, I don't have any more information than that, so that's where we're at. I think the, the, uh. The accessory dwelling is the one that is, uh. You know, most, most affects us.
Okay, but, thank you.
And that's, that is discussed and I included, um, with the notice of the meeting. Um, what's supposed to make the, you know, be a clearer explanation of the law than the law itself, so.
Yeah, and I, I quite honestly, I didn't find the guidance document to be particularly helpful in that.
No, but actually the, the law itself is almost clear.
Yeah.
And the law is seven pages and the guidance is twenty pages, so.
Yeah, and it's interesting because, and you know, there's been a lot of criticism about this particular thing and. Um, you know, whether you buy into it or not, it's just interesting that. Um, you know, the group that put together the, uh, guidance document. The main department of economic and community development would not typically be involved with land use planning.
Right.
So.
Well, the, it's all, it, it's basically directed at affordable housing and just producing more housing.
Yeah, and you know, uh, most of the objection has come again from smaller communities.
Right.
Uh, and, you know, they, uh, there were amendments that were put forth that didn't gain enough support to. Um, only require this in communities that had more than twenty-five hundred, well, they started with more than four thousand. And then they start, then they tried with, uh, more than twenty-five hundred. Um, that didn't work, so then they said, can we get, uh, you know, six more months? Can we get another year? Um, you know, we have a lot of communities in the state of Maine that are, you know, well below. Uh, four thousand, which is where the requirement for enforcing the building regulations is. Um, and then we have those communities that have no code enforcement at all, don't even have a name, they've got a number. They're part of the unorganized territories and the only thing they're required to have is a plumbing inspector. So they don't have a resource to help, they may not even have a land use ordinance at all. You know, and, uh, you know, uh.
That would be up, up in the, out, up in the county.
Well, not even that far. I mean, you go to Cacajo.
Yeah.
What is that, population of twenty? You know? So, uh, that's pretty interesting.
There's probably not much demand for housing even.
But you know what? There's, they're not all that far from Greenville and there's a demand for housing there. You know, and so, uh, I, I think this is responses that there's a demand for housing everywhere. You know, even in Sorento, there's a demand for housing. Um, and there's typically a demand for housing that's, uh, costs less than what's available.
Correct, but most places in the state, construction costs are a bigger portion than land court costs, I would.
Yeah, and so as a code enforcement officer, what we see is a challenge, um, continually is, uh, offsite. Construction, so things like. Um, you know, so there's rules for modular homes and manufactured homes, which manufactured homes is what most people would call a trailer. Um, but you know, now we have, uh, tiny homes and we have tiny homes on wheels. We have, uh, Hillview mini barns, we have shipping container homes. We've got all these different things that we have to try to figure out what's the right way of dealing with those. Um, and Sorento is a little bit easier, um, because I don't have to enforce any of the building codes. Um, but, uh, that doesn't make it right, it just saying that that's the way it is.
Right, right. Right, I don't think the aim of the law was to promote substandard housing, but.
Well, the, the rules are different for manufactured homes and modular homes. Um, and tiny homes than they are to a traditional stick-built home, and those are. Uh, by conscious decision at the state level. Um, to try to keep those options for housing at a, a more efficient cost.
Right. Are tiny homes legal category in the state?
Uh, there's two types of tiny homes that are legal category in the state. So, um, tiny homes built on site on, you know, either a pad or a foundation. Um, are part of the building code and there's specific, uh. Relaxation of some demands for those, um, and then there's the tiny home that's built on a chassis. So it's on a trailer type thing and they don't have to respect any building codes, they just have to get a title from the Secretary of State. And basically have to meet the requirements, uh, some life safety code requirements and the requirements of an RV. So in most towns, that particular type of ta- tiny home wouldn't, wouldn't. Could be considered a dwelling, but the state says they have to be.
But is that the tiny houses, um, you know, on the west coast anyways, tiny houses is what they're doing for, um, homeless. People, um, tiny houses, so is that something a person can build a tiny house and then? Use it as a VRBO or?
Uh, so, um, if it can meet. So a tiny house is generally defined as something less than four hundred square feet. Um, in Maine, we have two types of tiny houses, as I said, one that was built on site and one. That is built on a chassis, may have been built on site or built somewhere else and brought here. So, uh, we have in Sorento no restrictions on what can be rented as a Airbnb VRBO. In some towns, uh, it needs to be a dwelling unit to be that. And in some towns, the definition of dwelling unit, some of those tiny houses wouldn't meet that definition, so. For instance, if it's built on a chassis and doesn't meet the building code requirements. In other words, it's similar to an RV or a travel trailer or a fifth wheel. Those don't meet the requirements to be a dwelling unit and therefore wouldn't be able to be rented if that's what your ordinance says. Uh, the ordinance in the town of Sorento makes so, no such distinction.
Right.
The only restriction you have on, um, like using an RV. Is that in the shoreline area, it can't be used for more than a hundred and twenty days. Uh, unless it's part of a campground.
Wasn't there a, uh, minimum square footage in, in LD two thousand and three?
Um, I'm not familiar with it, if it is.
I thought that there was like a hundred ninety square foot minimum for, um, the detached. Units.
Um, it, it may be, but you could easily meet that, I mean.
No.
In order to have a bedroom, you have to have seventy square feet. So it'd be real difficult to do a, you know, a one-bedroom apartment and not have a hundred and ninety square feet.
Right.
That's pretty small.
Yeah.
So I think my dorm room was about that size.
Yeah.
Back in the day.
So what I'm hearing, Mike, is that we need to really reconsider our ordinance.
Yeah, I think we have to, you know, you never wanna, you never wanna do a knee-jerk reaction for your land use ordinance. But in this particular case, um, you know, we want to be real specific. Um, and see how quickly we could do that. Or we are, uh, negotiate with anybody that applies under this particular auspice of the law. To let us have time to do it.
Okay, well, but Mike, let me ask you a question going back a few minutes here, um. So it's, uh, as you stated, it's, it's our responsibility, the planning board's responsibility to, uh. Basically put this on the plate of the select board. Is there, um, how technical does that? Furtherance to them of our recommendation have to be, do we need to have a lawyer to, uh, help us with the wording or is it, uh? Can it be more colloquial than that?
I think that, um. I think we should probably create the language and have it approved by the attorney. And then given to the select board. Um, I was kind of hoping that the. MMA would come out with something, but I haven't seen it yet. But, I mean. Cause I think we could create something, but I'm not sure that whatever we create wouldn't be creating another issue.
Right. You can't just make reference to the state law.
I, I think we might be able to, uh, you know, my, my only concern is every time it seems pretty simple, it doesn't ever.
Right.
Out that it's that way, right? Like when you look at a, you look at a lawsuit and you're like, oh yeah, that's the way the court should decide it, but you, you know, you might as well. It's a fifty-fifty.
Right.
At best.
Right, I don't know, the, the MMA, I, I believe pretty much opposed this major portions of this legislation and.
They opposed all of it and, and that, that makes it more challenging because they didn't spend time figuring out how you're gonna implement it.
Right, yeah, that maybe I was gonna suggest, maybe that's why they haven't come up with a model legislation.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to, uh, try to find what the language should be. Um, and have it available, if I can put anything together and have some kind of reference to you for the next planning board meeting, I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay.
And in the, and in the meantime, I'll also try to find out what kind of notice we have to have, um, for changing the land use ordinance.
Okay, and you, you already have a call into Dan Pleggy.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, just for the notes here, it's an, an act to implement recommendations. Could you finish it, please?
Yep, um, I think it might be in your guidance document, but, um. Let me, uh, let me take where I quoted that from.
Long convoluted.
Yep, it's, yeah, it's a long name. It's, um.
Yeah.
It's signed in a law, so I think if you just say LD two thousand and three, you're okay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, I don't know that you need the whole long thing, but I can, um, I could certainly send that to you.
And Hilly, I.
Actually have the. I can send you the actual language of the law and so you can use the title from there.
Okay, thank you.
And I, Hilly, I took a bunch of notes too, so I've got that.
Okay, so. Mike, you gotta pardon me here because, um. Sometimes I can be smart about things and then other times I can be really.
This is not an easy one, Bob.
Um, here's my question is, time is of the essence, I, I get that and, um. So the warrant can't be, um, this, uh. The issuance of a warrant and then the announcement or the, yeah, the announcement that we're gonna have a town meeting and all that stuff. That's not the planning board, that's the, uh, that's the select board. Can we, so all of this stuff about the proper language and all of that. Um, which is the cart and which is the horse here? Um, if we, uh, and if, if, if we just send something to the planning board with. Basic rud- I mean, sorry, send something to the select board with fairly rudimentary language. Um, suggesting that we have to go forth and do this and have the planet and have the select board then. Get their wheels turning about putting a warrant and all that. Can't we then? Uh, polish up and create the language that's necessary? Or do we have to do all that language stuff? Come, you know, recommendation from the MMA if they will, uh, Plessey, you know, his input, all of that. Do we have to wait for all of that before the planning board does what it's supposed to do, which is to make a recommendation? To the select board that we have to do this.
Um, so my answer, my answer to that would be, um. I think that you, uh, based on my understanding of the rules of procedure and laws in the state of Maine. That, uh, you could certainly put a concept out to the select board. But I don't know that it's gonna expedite anything because. The select board is still going to have to have the actual language that's gonna go on the warrant. Before they can have their public meeting to receive public comment. Um, anytime that's changed pushes back however long it needs to be before it can actually be voted on. Right, so you have to give notice of what the final language is. Uh, a period of time before the, the special meeting would have to be held.
Okay.
Um, I defer to Rob, he said he didn't think it was ninety days, but I thought it was, so I'll have to find out.
Okay, yeah, that clarified, that, that answers the question, so we have to do, we'll.
Yeah, it really makes more sense for this group, no offense to the, to the select board, but this group. Theoretically is more aware of land use issues than the select board would be.
We are right now as more than we were yesterday, I'll tell you that.
That's right.
For sure.
Okay, got it.
Well, presumably we can get it, the town meetings and, but the last week in September, I guess. So we can.
I, I, I can't answer that because I thought we needed more notice than that, so I will find out.
Right, right, I guess Rob's not, um. Well, that's all very interesting.
Yeah, to say the least.
It's, it's odd that, as you said, that Maine is a homural state and that.
And yeah.
They, they make, you know, this kind of regulation which affects every town.
I think it's, um, I think it's indicative of the general feeling that it's. Not a, a housing shortage, but it's a housing crisis. And particularly in communities along the coast of Maine. Where there is more likely to be the short-term rentals or the, uh, distant investments and that kind of thing. Um, you know, if you think about it. Uh, what happens is people from away or even that are looking for a second home that maybe a little more affluent or that kind of thing. Um, are taking the housing stock and driving the prices up to the point where. The person that works at, you know, in a more blue collar or. Uh, service industry or any of those kinds of things can afford. But all those people come here, want all those things available to them, right? And so what happens is, you know, the people that are working at the Attiford or the, you know, the gas station or, or. Or plumbers and electricians or all those different kinds of things, well, maybe we shouldn't include plumbers and electricians.
I would not.
They're making pretty good money right now, um, you know, all the, all the service industries. And even when you look at, in some, some communities, you're looking at your first responders. You know, um, I understand that Bar Harbor is, is different than some other coastal communities, but. You, you know, if, uh, when I come out to Sorento and Sullivan on Tuesday morning and I'm driving off the island at six AM. I see a constant flow of contractors, but I also see a lot of people that I know. That work for the town or, or teachers or those kinds of things because they simply can't afford to live on the island.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, you know, that makes it more difficult for everybody.
Right. Okay.
Um, could I just do a shout out for Mike? Um, I think.
I, I.
You have been so, so valuable and, um. Informed us all in ways that, um, I'm brand new to the committee, but, but you've been great. Thank you, Mike.
Well, thank you.
Good to have some professional input.
Okay, what's next?
Well, we had, um, our, two of our members are also on the comprehensive. Planning board and, uh, this actually, as, as Mike noted. Um, we really are supposed to have a comprehensive plan to inform our. Uh, land use plan, um, and so I, I would think, um, Hilly and Trina could. Comment on what's going on with the comprehensive plan. And so I, I would think Hilly and Trina could comment on what's going on with the comprehensive plan.
Yes, we could. Trina, do you want to?
You start, you start off and I'll add in.
Well, the good news is after, I don't know, weeks, months, we, we finalized the survey, the, the public engagement survey, it's called. And it has gone to the printer and the, and will be, the paper copies will be available, well, next week, when, when it's all done, next week, we will have a work party to mail them out and you also have the option of filling it out online. So that's the first step. And then, Trina, tell me about all the other things we're doing this summer. Trina?
I was muted, so, and I can undo myself in my my beautiful lupin field.
Yes.
So we have been very graced by having the Hancock Community Comprehensive Planning. They're helping us as consultants.
We're paying, we're paying them.
Where, yes, we're paying them, but they've been very, very helpful. We've got the survey developed, we have a front end sort of a flyer that's gonna go out. And so our very first step is to get this survey out and encourage people to respond to it. And so we've got several ideas about how to increase the respondents, so we're going out with paper surveys, online surveys, and then we'll have a, starting July sixteenth, we're gonna have a survey week and we're gonna have an event on the eighteenth where we will all be available, there will be food available and people can come and ask questions if they want helps filling out the survey. We also will have an opportunity on the next day, there's a community concert and we'll have a table there, so we're, we're trying to, and this was Tom's idea, to have a survey week where we really push hard to get the respondents rate up. And, but this is only the beginning for the comprehensive planning committee that this is our first step and then, of course, our consultants are working on the chapters of the comprehensive plan and part of our job is to bring in the right people to help on reviewing chapters of the comprehensive plan. And we'll keep doing community engagement and I think the long term goal for the committee is that not only do we get community involvement, but by the time we send it to the state, the state also says yes and signs off on it, and so we have to get the state to sign off on it, we get to have our voters sign off on it, so you know, that's kind of a delicate balance, but that's our goal.
Can, can I ask a question? I don't remember, do you, do you have a specific question in the survey about short term rentals?
Yes.
Okay, so that kind of covers
Yes, because
we, we've been talking about forever.
Right, yep, we wanted to make sure that the planning committee and the comprehensive planning task force were working together.
Right.
One of the best things I think about the survey is it gives you ample opportunities, whether it's in, on paper or online for your own personal comments, so anything that really concerns you, you can handwrite that in.
And I, and I think, yeah, and I think to that point that we're gonna have so much more information that Mike can then help us really think about.
Guide our land use ordinance, which
Yes.
Definitely
Yep.
Needs to be brought into the twentieth century.
But I think to Hilly's point, I think having people make comments
Right.
is gonna be really important.
Right. And hopefully we'll get a good response.
We're working on it. Yeah, we have lots, there are lots of good ideas out there and
Yep, we had, Hilly and I had a meeting today with an individual who had some really good ideas about enhancing their response rate, so.
Participation.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's good and it's important. So spread, spread the word, your survey is please fill it out, send it back.
Okay, I guess Bob was leaving and coming back, he, he was, you know, had his notions about the short term rentals, but I think the, the information that we gather from the comprehensive plan survey and not isolating the issue makes it maybe a little less inflammatory. Perhaps putting it in the context of the overall future of Sorento, I think. Makes it
A little more palatable, maybe.
Right. And is, is Mike still there? I did Mike go, maybe Mike left.
No, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, so anyway, back to I'm going to have to submit a application for the work on our property and I'll have to recuse myself. And I've been talking with Mike, so I've gotta revise my application and I, I guess the point was to, I'll get that in so we can discuss it at the July sixth meeting.
Well, let me, let me update a little bit on that, Tom, because the more I looked into it this afternoon, it became clear as mud.
Oh, that sounds great.
So let me give a, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, so let me give an overview, so basically, so Tom's property, while it's a residential property and it was created prior to the, the shoreline zone ordinance being put into effect, he is not in a residential area, he's in the commercial maritime zone. Which normally would not allow a residential structure to be created in that zone. So what we call that is legally nonconforming. We used to use the term grandfathered, but that's not allowed anymore. And the ordinance uses legally nonconforming. So when we, when we look at things in the shoreline ordinance, there is a table in there that says who gets to decide on what. And it's really hard for me to try to grasp this particular thing. So Tom wants to extend his driveway. If I'm, if I'm understanding your project correctly, is he's got existing driveway and while it may be moved a little bit here or there, but basically he wants to extend it so that it's easier to get to the house from the driveway. Is that correct, Tom?
Right, the way the driveway, the, the existing, there, we have a, a kind of a U drive and then there's also a drive that goes up to the back door of the house that's been less frequently used and not recently gravelled particularly, but it's been in continuous use, I think as long as the house has been here. But it has a, a little steep portion and a sharp turn and we wanted to straighten it out and then also to gravel the entire driveway to make it easier to maintain and to make it a, a little safer, not, not, you know, it gets a little muddy and slippery in, in winter or in rain.
So what I've been trying to do is take the pieces out of the, the shoreline zoning ordinance that seem to be appropriate to this particular discussion. So first I, first I do is I pull out the definitions that seem to be appropriate to this. So the first one, driveway, and that, you know, that just says vehicular accessway less than five hundred feet in length. Nonconforming condition, there's two different nonconformities that may apply to this in the definitions. Nonconforming condition and nonconforming use. Nonconforming condition could be nonconforming lot structure or use, which is allowed solely because it was in lawful existence at the time this ordinance or subsequent amendment took effect, so that is, that particular definition applies to this totally. However, that definition's not terribly helpful because it's not used anywhere in the ordinance. So what is used in the ordinance is nonconforming use. And so nonconforming use is the use of building structures, premises, land or parts thereof, which is not allowed in the district in which it is situated, but which is allowed to remain solely because it was in lawful existence at the time the ordinance or subsequent amendments took effect. So there is a section in the shoreline zoning ordinance that talks about nonconforming uses, it's section D. And it talks about expansion. But in this particular case, we're not exactly expanding the nonconforming use. So what you have to look at and say, what's the nonconformity here? And the nonconformity is not a setback issue or the size of a structure or anything like that. It's simply saying that he's got a residential structure in a zone that wouldn't normally allow it. So making your driveway longer doesn't change that particular nonconformity. It doesn't increase it, it doesn't expand it, it doesn't change it, it's still a residential structure. And you know, importantly too, is a driveway could be perceived as a structure if you read the definition of structure. So the definition of structure is whether temporary or permanent, anything located, built, constructed or erected for the support, shelter or enclosure of persons, animals, goods or property of any kind, so that's the first part. The second part says, anything built, constructed or erected on or in the ground. Well, if I read that definition, that seems to be talking about Yeah.
Mike, I'm, I'm sorry, this is Trina. I don't think this conversation should be part of this committee meeting.
Well, let, let me get to that.
Okay, alright.
So, so I'm trying to make a logical progression to what the ultimate question's gonna be. And the ultimate question may be decided by the town attorney, who is another reason why I called him. So after you go through all that process, then you go and you look at the table of allowed uses for the shoreline ordinance. And some of those uses are allowed by the planning board only and some are allowed by the code enforcement officer and some are just allowed without a permit. And so it's really trying to determine what this particular thing that Tom wants to do is gonna be defined as. If it was just a residential structure in this particular zone, that might be planning board. If it were an accessory structure, that again would be planning board. If it's a certain amount of fill or change in the soil, if it's less than ten cubic yards, it doesn't require a permit. If it's more than ten cubic yards, the CEO gives that permit. So I'm only bringing this up not for you to make a decision tonight, but to prepare you for when the discussion arises at the next meeting. And the reason I asked Tom to bring it up tonight was so that people would be aware that this is gonna be discussion at the next meeting and also that the planning board is aware because somebody's gonna have to step up and facilitate that discussion because obviously Tom can't. And so I hope by that time to have some kind of insight from the town attorney, what he believes, I have a personal opinion, but I wanna get his backup on that.
Okay, I'm sorry that I said that.
No, no, that's fine, you know, it's a lot of mumbo jumbo, but that's such is life, that's what we deal with on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
So I should go ahead and submit my application to the town, is that correct?
Yeah, and see, that's even, again, that's another part of the, in clarity of this, if I just made up a word, was that some of, some things have to be applied to the planning board and some things get applied to the CEO, but I think we create an application that you fill out and we discuss it at the next meeting and hopefully the planning board can say either, you know, this is within our zone of influence and we approve or don't approve it or it's not our zone of influence and we're gonna pass it on to somebody else to do. So that's really what we're talking about.
Right.
And, you know, and more so, I think the more discussion out in the open we have, the better for transparency, simply because, Tom, you're the chairperson of the planning board. And so you expose yourself to a level of scrutiny that most people may not have to go through, so we're, we're better off.
I ask for no special consideration.
No, and I understand that. I, I think transparency, particularly in small communities, is very important. So we, we go through the process because this would be the same process we do for anybody else.
Right. Is that clear to everybody?
Yep.
Yeah, there's mud.
Yes, thank you.
Right, right, it's almost as clear as LD two zero zero.
Yeah, actually, I think LD two thousand three is more clear.
Well, Mike, go have a good stiff drink. You deserve it.
Yeah, you deserve it.
Okay. I don't know, I don't think we wanna get into the, it's after eight o'clock, I don't think we wanna get into this famous short term rentals. Hopefully, we'll get some more clarity on all this from the comprehensive plan survey. I think it'd be really good to get community wide
Yeah.
Opinions about these things.
I think you're right, Tom, and this will be helpful.
Okay, does anybody have anything else they wish to say? As, as I second Trina, I really appreciate Mike's expert and professional help.
Yeah, I prefer the term professional over expert because, you know,
Right, right.
I didn't, I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night and so.
That was probably lovely, I'm sure.
It's because you can't find housing on Mount Desert Island.
I am lucky that we bought our property a long time ago, so.
All right, well, I'm gonna call for adjournment unless anybody else has anything to offer. So you want to second that?
Second.
Second, what time is it?
Eight fifteen almost. Okay, approved, adjourned, thank it, thank you, everybody for showing up and I think it was, you know, one of our more interesting meetings.
Yeah.
Agreed, Tom and Mike.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night, Mike, thank you.